Good evening. I want to welcome you and call to order the meeting of the Forza ISD Board of Trustees for the date of August the 4th at 6:30 PM. Let the record show there is a quorum of board members, myself, Steven Shodrock, Mr. Craig Muse, Mr. and Ms. Liana Martinez, Mr. Marshall Fuller, Ms. Blana Reed, and Dr. Joel Otis. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. This is an open meeting and we welcome members of the public to observe. Please note that the public comments should be reserved for the public comment portion of the agenda. We kindly ask that no comments or questions be made outside of that time. Should you have any comments or questions, you're welcome to call and contact the administration directly. Thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Reed will lead us in prayer followed by Mr. Muse will lead us into place.
Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us and thank for the rain that we are getting, but prayers for the start of a new school year for teachers, administrators, students, and parents, that we continue to have a wonderful, productive, successful year. Dear Heavenly Father, please keep in your thoughts the victims of and families that lost so much in the floods. Be with those families and those students that have to deal with it. Also, dear Lord, be with our nation, our state, and our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement. The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, and competence. Our mission statement is, "FISD is committed to the development of innovative, lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success." Ms. Martinez will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of the board recitation of the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment. Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptability individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered, physically responsible leadership, transparent, and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Mr. Fuller will now recite our overview of the good governance and code of ethics.
Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month for the code of ethics, we are highlighting equity and attitude. I will be fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will accord others the respect I wish for myself. I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. Our good governance indicator for this month is, "The board has a code of ethics for itself and promotes ethical behavior and a governance structure throughout the organization and interactions with workforce, vendors, and stakeholders."
Thank you. We will now have Capturing Kids' Hearts National Showcase, school recognition for the Forza North, Forza South, and Forza Middle School. Dr. Gilstrap, I'll pass it over.
Sure, I'm gonna go up there to the podium.
Yes, sir.
I can have the principal from middle school, Mr. Riley, come on up. And South Elementary, Dr. Schluter, and North Elementary, Ms. Cruz, come on up. And come on up here, Ms. Brooks, you were a part of that. Y'all, y'all come right over here, just like the kids do, y'all gotta line up. So I do want to take just a moment to recognize our national showcase campuses in Florisville. This is not an easy feat. It is a program that we use to develop character, develop a community, and a sense of pride and ownership within our campuses with our students, and they build relationships which are so key. Whenever it comes to educating students, you've got to have a relationship between the staff, the teachers, and the kids. And so this program is a vital part of what we do. They do provide us some curriculum, and we review that, we go over that, we utilize it. But the biggest thing is, any curriculum is only worth how you implement it. And these campuses have implemented it to the level that it requires to get recognized at the national level. So I do want to recognize all three of these campuses and say thank you to them and their principals for what they do in implementing this. And they just represent their campus. They represent all the staff members that do it on a day-to-day basis. And so I'm sure they would give the kudos and the credit to the teachers and the paras and the students, most importantly, on their campus. So thank y'all very much. We have a little certificate for you. Let's see, North Elementary, I don't find North Elementary here. North Elementary, this is, come on, both of y'all, come on here. North Elementary, this is year three, four? Four years consecutive they've received this recognition, so kudos to them. They set the way and set the bar high for Forza ISD, so thank y'all very much for that. South Elementary, this is year, second year to get recognized? Second year to get recognized as national showcase? And so Dr. Schluter's made a huge impact in implementing the program on her campus, so thank you for what you do there. And Mr. Riley, also second year as well, implementing the program at the middle school, and it does make such a huge impact, and so thank you for what you do. They have also provided to us a plaque because now we are also recognized as a national showcase district for capturing kids' hearts. And so thank y'all for what you do to implement this and make such an impact and difference for our kids. Thank you so much.
Ms. Brooks and Ms. Cruz, I want to just say thank you so much. Four years in a row is incredible, and again, it shows the high quality of our administration and our staff and teachers, and we couldn't be more proud of you. Dr. Schluter, what a turnaround at Forza South. Praise God for you. And we thank the Lord for you, and we know that God has placed you there, and we just are so grateful for you and how your staff and teachers have come together to make you now, in two years in a row, national showcase. And Mr. Riley, what a wonderful job you've done at the middle school. You are so well-respected there, and we respect you and so thankful also for the two years. And then our district, raise that plaque. What'd you put?
It's small, but they gave it to me.
I can't read it, but our district has been recognized as well. And so we have the best district, the best administration, the best leadership, and Dr. Gilstrap, and we appreciate everything that our administration does for us, and we fully support you regardless of what other people say. God bless you.
It's also part of their new curriculum for the new teacher start. I know they have a curriculum, I know they do.
Somebody are gonna get over here. I won't stay in the middle this time since we've got a district.
There you go.
You're good?
Yes. Ready? One, two, one more. One, two. Martinez, can you step a little bit further? One, two. Okay.
All right. You have a question before you move to the floor?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
That's right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it going, all right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Keep it going, all right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments? I have one.
No, just the one you have.
Okay. Let me read the guidelines for that, please. The board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with the board procedures may do so at that time. The board asks that each participant's comments are limited to items on the agenda pertaining to district business and be no longer than two minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Copies of the district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available at www.fisd.us. At this time, Mr. Brooks, you have two minutes.
Good evening, board. Just wanted to pass around a few more kudos. My son had the privilege of doing a couple of sports camps this summer, baseball and football in particular. Through osmosis, got to watch a little bit of the softball, I think it was volleyball in the gym, and then track and field, and it was fantastic. Baseball was super cool to see how many of the students came out and helped those coaches. Interactive, fun, watching the kids get into it, of course, third, fourth grade, just having a ball. Football, it was his first time to experience it, jumped in there, watching the coaches discipline, get after kids not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and get them back in line, but do it in a respectful way. It was fun to watch. He was super sad that last day when it was rained out because he wanted to go finish it up. But just all the athletic program, getting to see one day of each, just wanted to toss them some kudos. They did a fantastic job. And that many kids, keeping them entertained, engaged, learning, and having fun, they did a good job, so thank you.
Ms. Brooks, I appreciate you coming. Thank you very much. It's always nice to hear good comments like that. We will now have the superintendent report by Dr. Gilstrap.
I guess, board members, as Mr. Brooks, our public comments you got through talking about, we think we're starting to get our students and staff back up to the school, and I will say it's always great to see our campuses come back to life. Over the summer, they, you know, you walk the halls and people are cleaning and the lights are kind of dimmed down, and it's just not the same. So whenever everybody starts coming back, it really starts coming back to life, and they're starting to prepare for the new school year. Many of our students have already begun early morning practices, which if you haven't been around to see them, particularly with cross-country all summer, at six o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning, they're up here running and getting ready to represent us, so kudos to them. Last week, we did host thirty-five new teachers to FISD. This is a drastic decrease in our number of new teachers for this year. We're excited about our new teachers that have come in and the experience level that they bring. Only nine of those new teachers are new to the profession thus far. We do have a couple more openings that we're looking to fill, but again, the experience level that we were able to recruit, and that credit goes to our principals. Thank you for doing a great job this summer of really holding the line, you know, with the grade raise and with our calendar. You know, we're gonna do some assessments to try to figure out what held our retention rate down, and also what kind of recruited and put out there of, you know, why some of these experienced teachers are coming into Florisville now. So, but either way, I know that our students in the classroom are gonna benefit from the experienced teachers that we're able to recruit. Today, we were able to welcome all staff members back to our campuses for a week of in-service and to prepare for the first day of school. Many of them have been preparing really all summer, going through professional development in order to better hone their craft in the classroom, but we want to make sure we recognize them, and they're gonna benefit our students. On Thursday, we will have our convocation at the event center. Convocation's a great opportunity to have all of our staff members come together. We do have everybody that's employed by the district shows up to our convocation, not just campuses, not just teachers, but we have maintenance, custodial, bus drivers, police officers, we have everybody that's employed by the district there, so that's always a great gathering. We're gonna recognize our service award winners, as well as have a guest speaker with Michael Dags will be speaking at our convocation this year, and as always, our school board members are invited to attend that. We will also be welcoming kids back for the first day of school on Tuesday, August the 12th. I've been telling people, make sure you circle that date on the calendar. Tuesday, August 12th will be the first day of school. This is the second most exciting day of the year. Obviously, to me, the first most exciting would be graduation, but the first day of school is an exciting time for everybody. We also ask that our students, families, and community, please be patient with us as we're gonna have increased traffic. There's gonna be more traffic flow in school zones, around bus stops, and also things are gonna be a little delayed. So we were prepared to hear some of those comments whenever they're out there, but we want to make sure all of our kids get to school safely and get home safely, and part of that is just gonna take some time while we teach and learn routines for new parents, going to new campuses, and just making sure everybody has our routines down, making sure that we're taking things as safe as possible whenever it comes to our students. These things all take time. They will smooth out in the days to come. We also want to remind our community to be mindful of those school zones and also our bus stops, and please never pass a bus with red flashing lights. We want to make sure we get that message out there, because a lot of people are not used to the buses rolling in the mornings and in the afternoons, and so I want to make sure they're watching for those things starting on Tuesday, the 12th. Back-to-school bash is tomorrow along Tiger Lane at the high school. Will begin at six o'clock and conclude with our community Pepper Alley at seven in the gym this year. This is a great way for our district and our families to celebrate and kick off the new school year. Meet the teacher for grades pre-K through five will be held on Thursday from three to six. We encourage our families to attend these meetings and begin building relationships with teachers and campus administrators. It's a great way to start off on the right foot. We're currently, or we recently released the Back-to-School Guide in the Wilson County News. This was a collection of information that we provided to the community and our families about everything about the district and the upcoming school year. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, we encourage you to do so. It is now available on our district website as well as a PDF, so you can check it out there. I do want to thank Blanca Martinez for her efforts in putting that together. Thank you, Blanca, for doing that. Our community appreciates it very much. A one-stop shop for everything for FISD. Included in the superintendent report this month are the Athletic and Transportation Student Handbooks. These are for board review. These documents will be reviewed with students and set to set expectations and will be posted on the district's website. Later in the meeting, Miss Thomas will review changes to our employee handbook. Mr. Schrolle will also provide an update on the student handbook changes. These are also for review, will be reviewed with students and employees as needed beginning of the school year. As I stated in June, and we discussed in executive session, an unannounced intruder detection audit, otherwise known as an IDA, was done by TEA back in April with one finding. All the required actions have taken place and completed, including retraining our campus staff and a presentation to our safety committee. The campus has also undergone additional measures and trainings to ensure the safety of our students and our staff. Don't forget, board members, we're gonna be hosting the legislative update training for all school board members around the area. They're gonna be invited here. Region 20 will be coming on Thursday, August the 21st at the middle school at six o'clock. Again, Region 20 will be presenting that, and all participating board members will receive their required continuing education hours, so please mark your calendars down for that. We continue unpacking of the numerous laws that have been passed by the eighty-ninth legislative session. In working with various organizations and attorneys, there seems to be something new discovered every day, literally every day. I've learned something else today that's deep inside some of those massive bills that they pass, so we're working our way through those. The upcoming policy update 126, which should be coming out in October, it's gonna be a big one. They've already announced that, that particularly on the legal side of it, it's gonna have a lot of bills that are affected by the legislative session. On the local policy side, be expecting a lot of changes throughout the year. So those other upcoming updates are gonna be coming out on policies, those update, local updates will be coming out throughout the year. Regardless of a policy has been updated yet or not, a new law is in effect once it is set by the legislature and signed by the governor. So even though we may not have a policy that matches a law, the law trumps it, and we will catch up with policy. That's just timing and the way things work because of the number of bills that were passed. Just a reminder that our September, regular September meeting will be September the 8th, so principals jot that down, September the 8th. The first is Labor Day, so we will not be in school that day, so the regular September meeting will be a week later. I do want to take a brief second, if I can, to introduce our new transportation director, Mr. Ramon Lavario. Ramon, stand up. Mr. Lavario has been our master mechanic for us for how many years now?
Six.
Six years now, but he has really developed a great relationship with everyone in the transportation department, the office staff, as well as the drivers, the routers, everybody else, and he came in and did a great job in his interview process and really had a good plan for the department and how we're gonna roll that out. And I've already sat down and talked to him about the first day of school, and so, good luck. But he's got a wealth of knowledge and experience, not just in turning wrenches and working on buses, but also how transportation works, and he's got a lot of great ideas, so welcome aboard, sir. Appreciate you very much. I also want to take an opportunity to introduce Donald C. You'll come over here, sir, just real quick. There you go, that way we can see you. Officer C's gonna be joining us here at the Early Childhood Campus, is that right?
Yes.
That's gonna be his assignment? So we did have an officer that retired this year, and so Officer C's gonna be coming in. Welcome aboard, sir. We thank you for your service.
Welcome.
Before you be in here. Included also is the contract offers that we've made. As you know, superintendent has the authority to offer those, so I've provided an update to that. And then you can see the, just a few reminders, Back-to-school bash tomorrow, convocation is this Thursday, the first day of school we already talked about, and then our regular September meeting will be a week late next month. Any questions? It's a lot of information, but there's a lot going on right now.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. That was quite a stop.
It was.
It's an exciting time, so I mean, I welcome our new director of transportation. First day's gonna be to pull your hair out, I mean, it's like they talk about every year, so it's coming, so. But I did read that he was doing some, for some of the drivers, they kind of, they did some authorized, trying to make sure they understand the schedule where they're gonna pick up students, so I commend you for that.
They've already been doing some dry runs, did some more this morning, I believe, just so we're reviewing routes, drivers know the routes. They're also driving them to see, hey, is there a particular corner or a particular tree limb hanging down? They're able to make all those calls now, so they can. Know what's going on the first day?
Appreciate that brief plug. Thank you, sir. We will now have the state academic assessment report by Ms. Jones and Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, President, Mr. Shodrock, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Gilstrap. My name is Brenda Jones, and I'm the District Federal Programs and Assessment Coordinator. Today, I'm going to be presenting our star 2025 assessment results, which are gonna include our star three through eight, RLA, which stands for reading language arts, math, science, and social studies. Then I'll go over star, and of course, our EOC results for English one and two, algebra one, biology, and U.S. history. This report that I'm about to show you is showing all of our students, so it's unlike accountability that only includes students and an accountability subset, and then accountability also has all these different math ways that we report the data. I am showing you all students, read testers included for EOCs, only EOCs. And we're gonna be looking at star performance for overall grade levels and contents, including cohorts. So first up is our star grades three through eight. I have a hard time, mine like gotta turn around.
If you want to, move that podium over.
Yeah. Can I turn this one? Thank you. This helps me. So a couple of things that I want to highlight here are gonna be out of the eighteen performance levels, so when I say performance levels, these are all performance levels. We have approaches, meets, and masters. Eleven indicators went up and two stayed the same. Out of the six in our meets performance level, so just this little, this blue right here, you could see which ones went up. There was no change, and there was a slight change in, well, we had one, two, three change, one no change, and one went down a little. This is from test administration to test administration, so this is our early results, not our prelim, not our final, this is our early results that I take. I do want to mention that you'll see that our fifth grade kind of took a hit. We had some changes in staff at one of our campuses at the elementary level for fifth grade, so we are aware that some of those kiddos did not get the full potential of teaching that they could have, but now we're good to go.
Big pickup in eighth grade.
Oh, no, absolutely. Let's go on to, okay. Last year, I did not show you a breakdown of our elementary campuses, but as you can see, this is just approaches for third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade in RLA. South, right here, had a good increase from fifty-six to sixty-seven. Both campuses went up in RLA in fourth grade, and then in fifth grade, we did go down just slightly. And then this is, I'm gonna just give you some time to absorb this slide. This is all of it. This is approaches, meets, and masters. Just kind of looking right here in the approaches. This is the district, and then FNE, FSE. You can see in our meets, they went up. Approaches went down some, so we are aware as we analyze the data and look at everything, you know, where are some areas of growth and what are our strengths? Math, in the meets level, everyone went up with the exception of seventh grade. I am in another slide going to explain that a little bit more, but out of all, all our meets and masters went up, and all the grade levels except for seven. Out of eighteen performance indicators, thirteen went up. Now, I gave us a breakdown of our seventh grade and eighth graders. Forty percent of our seventh graders took eighth grade math this year. So a lot of, most of those students that would have been our meets and masters are now in our eighth grade meets and masters. However, I wanted to break it down to show that, yes, it looks like our grade seven star, sixty percent of our kiddos were at thirty-nine percent, but when you include the students in seventh grade who took grade eight star, were at sixty-three percent, and forty-three in meets and twenty in masters. Same thing kind of happens in eighth grade, and last year was our first year for our seventh graders to take eighth grade, have the opportunity to take eighth grade math. This is their second year, and I think the numbers doubled, if I remember correctly, as far as the number of students. So for eighth grade math, this sixty-seven percent is just sixty percent of our kiddos, eighth graders only, sixty-seven percent at the approaches, thirty-four meets, and then masters, but then if you go and you look at all of our eighth graders, this includes our students who also took algebra, all our eighth graders would be at seventy-four percent, forty-eight percent, and twenty-four percent. And then this is our just middle school algebra numbers. So what we do notice, though, that seventh grade, now that this is happening...
Well, we're removing forty percent of the seventh grade class, and they're taking the eighth grade tests.
Correct.
And those are probably your higher achievers.
Yes.
In seventh grade.
So then eighth grade can kind of get skewed a little bit too, because now you're looking at meets and masters kiddos from seventh grade that are contributing to eighth grade star. Okay, let's see. This is campus level, math, third, fourth, and fifth grade approaches. FSE went up in third and fourth grade approaches, FNE went up in fourth and fifth grade, and again, fourth grade went up at both campuses, so this is in math. And if you want to just kind of take a couple seconds to digest some of this, and approaches, you can see right here, that's district, FNE, FSE. So our campuses sometimes help balance this out a little bit too in certain areas. Our masters, you can see, all went up, except for these two that stayed the same.
Some good numbers are double digits, and a couple I saw, I think I saw fifteen percent and twelve percent.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So yeah, it's gonna be interesting too, once I show you some cohort data. Let's see, now this is our science and social studies. Science is only tested in fifth and eighth grade, and social studies is only tested in eighth grade. And social studies is only tested in eighth grade. Fifth science increased in all three performance levels, all right here, three of these, it all went up. Meets went up 4%. Eighth grade science, masters went up from right here, 11% to 17%. And it stayed the same in meets. And then eighth grade social studies increased in all three performance levels as well in approaches, meets, and masters, went up by 5% in eighth grade. This is science, fifth grade, at our different campuses, both campuses went up, 56 to 70, 52 to 67. And this is just looking at campus. If you wanted to see their meets, approaches, meets, and masters, everyone went up. Right here in the approaches, those were, yeah, 15 and 14%. Okay, now our RLA cohort data. Our third graders last year that are, that this past year in 25 were fourth graders, they went from 38 to 48%. This is in meets grade level. So this is one standard above the passing, the state passing standard. So we're just, we're focusing on meets, 10% increase. For our last year's fourth graders, our 24 fourth graders to 25, went up by two. Fifth graders, from fifth to sixth grade went up by two. From seventh grade, no, sixth grade to seventh, another two. And then this is, this is a big one here. Our last year's seventh graders in eighth grade went up to 67% in meets. Let's see what else. Okay, now this is math. Same thing here, but you will see, we did take a hit in sixth grade math at the meets grade level and we did take a significant hit in seventh grade as well.
What do you think that is?
Tied back to that.
It's tied back to our kiddos. And trying, and you know, it's a whole new process for everybody, so it's a learning curve, you know, for our teachers in a sense. So the thing is, we're aware, we see it now, so I believe the campuses and Mrs. Brooks have come up with an action plan for this.
Seventh graders that took the eighth grade test, so they're not in that.
This is, this data is the 60%. However, it is not, I mean, we want our 60% to be absolute.
The sixth graders from 24, seventh graders from 25, they dropped by 16%.
Okay, but don't have the 29% drop.
Correct. That's because we were doing those 40% that took the eighth grade test.
And this is at the meets grade level.
And so like Ms. Jones said, if I could just jump in, so we have doubled the amount of kids on the advanced math track. So we're up to 40% of our kids on that advanced math track. So we went from like 60-ish kids to close to 120 kids in seventh grade, who are now taking that eighth grade test and really doing very well. If you remember from the big level. But that advanced math track also exists in sixth grade. So their curriculum is also being expedited there. So again, that's a newer process for us, where we're raising the bar for our kids and we know, you know, obviously we still want to make sure that they get there, but that's indicating we've got some work to do there, but it's because we're raising the bar for them also.
Yes. I have a sixth grader, and he's going to be a seventh grader, and he's on that track and he was like, Mom, they're teaching me seventh grade standards and I'm in sixth grade. I said, sorry, kid. Deal with it. And he did phenomenal on STAR, so there was no crying for him. Let's see, we went over math cohort. I see I'm way behind here. Okay, now comparison to the state. We're above the state in eighth grade RLA. Seventh graders in 2004 were at 45% in approaches and they went up to 67% as eighth graders. And so you'll see right. This is what? This is approaches, yeah. 91, 80. I think I wrote my numbers down wrong in my notes. So we still do have some growth areas to catch up with the state. Science, oh, this is, oh, that's fine. I was reading the wrong slide. I'm so sorry. This is math.
We're getting closer to the state average.
Definitely, yes. That's what I was going to say. Definitely closing the gap in several areas. Again, the seventh grade differential is because we do have quite a few of our kids on that advanced math track. So that's indicating a population that we need to provide services for a little bit differently than we are, but that advanced math track is actually doing very well for us. So we've got some supports that y'all will hear about on the next couple of presentations for that coming forward. But definitely eighth grade in ELR and in math really soared. So we're really focusing on that meets and masters level and those upper grade levels and trying to move kids. And like Ms. Jones said, the elementary campuses did tend to balance each other out a little bit, but both are making progress toward being right at that state level and making sure our kids are competitive with everyone around the state.
And that's something we've talked about is, being at the state level, there's no reason why our kids can't perform in that. We should be, we should be above them. But that's our, our objective is making sure we're exceeding the state average. And we're closing that gap and getting pretty close to it.
Yes, and so like the quote unquote experts would say, if you're going to grow 3% or even 5% a year, you should consider that a, a pretty big jump when you consider about how many kids that is. And so when you saw places where there were some double-digit increases in quite a few places, in science, certain grade levels in math, or eighth grade in particular, those are areas where we're seeing a significant change, really just within one year.
Yes. Okay, we're going to go over now to sci... You're okay.
I can talk about that.
Science and social studies, we were, we're, as you can see, above the state in science from fifth grade and eighth grade and eighth grade social studies. Okay, now we're going to go to our STAR EOC results. This includes December, because we were on a five-by-five, December and spring, or fall and spring numbers, meaning it includes retesters. I included completely every test that was taken in here. So if a student did not pass in the fall and they took it in the spring and they didn't pass, I'm counting it twice. If they, if they did pass, then it's counting once. With accountability, they take the best score. So my, this number, these numbers are going to be just a little...
The student could be counted twice in there if they're...
Correct. In my data, yes. Yeah, like...
If they pass, they only count once, right?
Correct. When that comes around. I had to make sure, because I kept looking back and forth and I'm like, why does this look different? This is test administration to test administration. Algebra has middle school and high school combined. I do, so we did this past school year, try to teach all of our kids algebra in the fall with that five-by-five. So it's going to be different this coming up year. Our kiddos will not be all testing in algebra and taking algebra in one semester. So trying to staff that, we had some teachers that were teaching algebra for the first time. And so you can kind of see that in this data. Now, when you look at all students at the approach grade level though compared to the state, you will see with biology, we're right there, in U.S. history, we're right there. As we go in further, comparing our first-time testers to state, the state's first-time testers, they're going to see that we are above. So the 78, this orange is us, the blue is the state. So for English 1, we were above. We're really close with English 2 and algebra. However, biology was above the state, and U.S. history was above the state. So looking at that, we were able to identify periods that we have strengths. One of the things that we're looking at with our students who not... This data kind of shows you that our kiddos who don't struggle are going to do well regardless.
Yeah.
Our kids that do struggle, we understand they need extra support.
And that's, you know, and I know we had that conversation with the five-by-five discussion and a couple other times, but that's obviously where we are missing, is our, our good kids do good. But our kids that are struggling, continue to struggle and we're not closing that gap. And that's what we went to go with.
And here's Mrs. Brooks. Now it's your turn. Oh, I don't know if you want to go over the strengths and growth. I'll go over these strengths real quick. So just summarizing up the data, our areas of strength, elementary at a seven-tested area, six went up in approaches. So that would be your reading and math at all the grade levels and then your science at fifth grade level. Third grade, fifth grade math went up in all performance levels. Math grade, fifth grade science increased in all performance level and is above the state. Elementary cohorts, 11 increased out of 12 performance levels with our cohort data. So fifth, fourth to fifth grade math and reading, and this includes approaches, meets, and masters. Middle school cohorts increased in all performance levels as well, sixth through eighth grade RLA and eighth grade math. Eighth grade RLA and math are above the state in all performance levels. Eighth grade social studies increased in all performance levels and is above the state. First-time testers for EOC above the state in English 1, Biology, and U.S. history. Our areas of growth is our tier one instruction, seventh grade math, algebra went up at high school, and RLA in fifth grade, and English 1 and English 2. And our goal is, we thrive to meet or exceed the state in all tested areas.
You can put both of them up. So just looking at the action plans going forward, at both the elementary campuses, they are going to see a difference in their master schedule this year as we adapt to the new calendar. Students will actually have more learning time during the day, so they're going from having those two rotations back down to one, because they're getting that time back on the Fridays, right? So they'll actually have longer instructional blocks and that gives us a little bit more freedom to make sure that we're teaching things thoroughly and not expediting too much, which I think has been a struggle for us on some campuses. Both campuses are also really focusing in on that MTSS period or that intervention time that's built into the day. Like Ms. Jones said, we have a lot of kids who are doing well, those first-time kids with our tier one instruction, but we know that we need to rev up our supports for our students who are struggling. So really reinventing that time at North, really continuing to focus on that fourth and fifth grade MTSS. And then Dr. Suter's got some restructured expectations at South, so both campuses are continuing with that. And North is also going to work on some in-the-moment coaching with Ms. Cruz to really focus on that tier one instruction and making sure we're providing the best we can for students. Both campuses are also going through ECR training or the extended constructive response or the SA piece of the ELR exams and really focusing on that this year and revving that instruction up. So that's a place that we have, we see potential for a lot of growth. Both campuses also, we're looking at sped staffing and sped support, whether it was increasing dyslexia or increasing sped staff support as those numbers continue to grow, our need for support continues to grow. And then we're also making sure that we're implementing those systematic spiral reviews and progress monitoring and data tracking in PLCs. So just continued efforts, like Ms. Jones said, there were a lot of positives and lots of big jumps, so we're going to continue those practices and continue to refine them more. At the secondary level, both campuses again are going to experience, we have some professional development particularly for Algebra 1, and then our math teachers at middle school through lead forward. Same presenter that we used at elementary where you saw the good results. So we brought in that same presenter who's going to use a lot of those similar strategies at the secondary level, so we're looking forward to that this week. We also are looking at high school, really looking at their assessments and making sure that we're aligning those to the standards and how we're progress monitoring kids going forward. Mr. Barrett is also redesigning his, what I would call like the advisory period or the flex period, to make sure that we have a systematic way that we're providing those interventions to kids. So that will really help our kids who are not succeeding on that first trial in particular. And again, middle school is also focusing on that extended constructive response on the ELR and building that into their PLCs. And all campuses, it's on this side, but all campuses, we are reinventing our data dashboards and PLC, working on that progress monitoring piece, which is also a part of TIA, which is having that as well. These are all things that the district is supporting, as you will also hear echoed in the dip presentation in a couple more agendas.
Questions?
Ms. Jones, Ms. Brooks, I thank y'all for that work. As Dr. DeGilstrap said, there's, there should be no reason that our students can't be above the state. So we're excited about it.
All right, now we will have the 2025-2026 handbook by Mr. Schroller.
Good evening, Superintendent Schools, Board President, Board of Trustees. District Student Handbook was viewed by campus and district leaders. This handbook helps communicate essential information to students and parents for the current school year. It helps to facilitate a general understanding of the law and other regulatory matters. In Board Book, I've shared a list of the changes for you to view. If you would allow me a minute and I'll, very quickly, I'll try to update, explain, inform you of the recent changes that TASB has made. The first change is in regards to House Bill 121, which requires districts to provide information to parents of all enrolled students about safe storage of firearms at least three times a school year. The second change requires districts to provide at least two opportunities for in-person conferences during each school year between each parent of a child enrolled in the district and the child's teachers. As you know, it used to be one. The third change requires districts to attach its policy resolving student and parental grievances in accordance with Senate Bill 12 as an appendix to the Student Handbook. The fourth change, big one, was brought about by House Bill 1481, which prohibits students from using their personal communication devices such as cell phones, tablets, and smartwatches while on school property during the school day. In addition, House Bill 1481 requires the districts to authorize use of a personal communication device if it is necessary to implement a student's IEP or 504 plan by a student who has a documented need to use the device based on a directive written note from a qualified physician. Policy FNCE Local has more information pertaining to this. Fifth change pertains to parental consent. A state law requires school districts to obtain written parental consent before a student may participate in a student club that is authorized or sponsored by the district. And the final change pertains to a new bill to establish a local school library advisory council. That's Senate Bill 13. Basically, it says it allows for a school board to establish a local school library advisory council, which you'll hear us call it by the acronym SLAC, to assist the board with its responsibilities related to library materials, including library materials collection development, and reviewing challenges to library books in the district catalog. I'd like to reiterate, Board, that this handbook is updated before each school year by TASB legal and policy experts, and that's to help districts stay current with changes in state and federal law guidelines from state and federal agencies, commissioner rulings, court cases, and the like. With that said, are there any questions relating to the changes in this year's student Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing to change, but I was looking over the dress code and noticed, let me find and pull it up here, that there's, there's something in writing here for our elementary schools' dress code, the length of shorts and skirts, as well as middle school, but... Oh, no, maybe I saw a different version. Never mind. It does include high school. Okay, 6 through 12.
Okay. Yeah, if you see something, feel free to email me, call me, Ms. Martinez, and I'll be happy to get back with you.
So this, this handbook has got to be knowledge by every student in every...
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last report is the 2025-2026 FISD Employee Handbook by Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Lord. Similarly to Mr. Schroller, I have the employee version of the handbook, which includes the mini updates, in my opinion, front and back. Sometimes we only have half a page. Every two years after we have a legislative session, all those Senate bills are put into place and they result in more updates to our employee handbook. So I will review those. I hope as fast as Mr. Schroller. I'll never say that. So just beginning off on page three, we know, as you probably know, the board meeting required deadline of, the requirement to be posted has changed from 72 hours to three business days. So there's lots of little changes like that. So it might be a period or adding the policy number or just spelling a number out. However, so change from 72 hours to three business days. On page 16, with reference to... On page 16, with reference to ADA accommodations, we already have ADA accommodations in place. This, the new update added the process for the initiation and the request of those accommodations. So it just had us specifically outlined. And I should also mention, in the handbook, the large document that I believe you were provided in the board book, everything in yellow is an update or a change. So that's how it's very visible. On page 18, information was added to the restriction on school administrators' performance of outside employment. So there were parameters added. Mental health training, we've known this was coming, but it is formally in the handbook in accordance to the TAC and requirements for all staff must have mental health training for students. On page 34, there is an added provision related to maternity leave and FMLA leave where an employee can either choose to have it paid or unpaid. Page 46, we added tank tops, just for clarification, for no, staff are not permitted to wear tank tops as daily wear. Page 48, a little interesting. So page 48 talks about harassment of students, and it's actually, they want us to actually copy and paste DF legal, DHB legal, and FFH local and legal, and that are, it's coming from Policy Update 126. So Dr. Gilstrap mentioned you will have Policy Update 126 in October, so it's not even ready yet. So we will put that in the handbook as soon as it is updated. Page 48, reporting suspected child abuse. This is one, a big one that we pointed, made sure. We always highlight the updates to the handbook to staff, but this is one we really emphasized in our training. Reports, reports of abuse must be made within 24 hours to the local, to the law enforcement agency, and they listed DPS and family services. However, it specifically states the report must go to not district police. So within 24 hours. Changes were made to just further define, it just added more details to, from Senate Bill 571, which I think five of the updates come from Senate Bill 571, all related into the sexual abuse and maltreatment of children and how those crimes and abuse are reported. Reports to Texas Education Agency, this topic was actually moved to page 68, so they combined two topics. They moved that from the termination section, which is on 68. Technology resources, page 51. Changing with the times, we added this line in reference to artificial intelligence that says only, it can only be used as a support tool to improve student outcomes, not to replace the decisions made by teachers or students. So I'm sure along, every year after that, we're going to get more and more clarification and having to add more and more policy in reference to AI. Page 52, personal use of electronic communications. We updated the word Twitter to the X symbol and added from way back in Policy Update 124 in reference to trademarks. Page 56, just changed the word "all." We already said that criminal history checks for employees, but we added the word "all employees." Employee arrests and convictions. We, another update from Senate Bill 571, the superintendent is required to report criminal history to TEA. So the next several updates that have to do with criminal reporting all talk about the timeline. The superintendent principals all have to report to the superintendent within seven, within seven business days, and the superintendent basically has to report everything. Arrest, hits on criminal history, suspected abuse, suspected allegations, all directly to TEA, which there was already a process. It just further outlined and gave more specificity and just actually just made it much more broad where the superintendent's probably going to do more reporting to TEA. Page 58, we just deleted nicotine products because the statute does not prohibit now nicotine products. And the updates to page 66, 67, and 68 are all very similar, just updated, like I mentioned, the requirements for reporting, stating within seven days of knowledge of any wrongdoing, principals have to report to the superintendent. That knowledge of if an employee resigns, is terminated, if they just resign on their own, we still, if we suspect wrongdoing, we have to report to TEA. And lastly, as I mentioned, this section was, of reports to TEA, was moved to page 50. Are there any questions on the updates to the employee handbook? Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you taking the time to highlight the areas. Thank you very much. Now, on, next on the agenda is item five. Action items, first action, item is a consent agenda by Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, former included consent agenda this month are typical board minutes as well as some financial reports, but we do have three other items. We have a donation from Monica Villalobos with Rejoice Imaging. She has donated $1,000 to the cross-country team, so we do thank her and want to recognize her for that. Region 20 commitments has been added in there. This is the services that we contract with Region 24 at a reduced rate because they're able to get a lot of districts, and so they come together, get some services at some discounted rates. So our commitments to them is included in there for a total sum of $101,000. And then also a resolution regarding extracurricular status for 4-H organizations. It basically establishes the Wilson County Extension Agent as agile teachers, so that kids that are participating in 4-H, if they're going for shows or anything like that, contests, that they'll be counted as extracurricular absences. So again, that's an agreement that we do annually. If there's not any questions, the administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Moots and a second by Bono Reed. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. We will now consider approval of the district improvement plan for 2025-2026 by Ms. Brooks.
So y'all got a great preview with the state assessment report. But by state law, the local Board of Trustees must ensure a district improvement plan and improvement plans for each campus are developed, reviewed, and revised annually for the purpose of improving the performance of all students. The board must annually approve district and campus performance objectives and ensure that the district campus plans are mutually supportive of each other and state goals. The 2025-26 district improvement plan does mirror our strategic Plan 2.0. Over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work to ensure that those are going hand in hand. The entire dip is included in your board packet, along with the extra compliance pieces such as the House Bill 3 goals and information regarding our migrant services. But tonight, we are just going to go over our goals and performance objectives. So like I said, our district improvement plan does mirror our strategic Plan 2.0, which has the support of the board and was mutually adopted and accepted and implemented at all of our campuses. You'll also see the alignment within the campus improvement plans. Really what we focus on are the four goals, excellent student outcomes, superior workplace, exceptional customer service and community engagement, and strategic resource management. We also use the strategies within our strategic plan to stem all of our performance objectives within the district improvement plan. So again, everything is aligned and working hand in hand, and we're not chasing a bunch of different paths. In January and April, we did come together as a district leadership team and evaluated data in four separate categories, demographics, processes and programs, student achievement, and perceptions. We've analyzed a variety of qualitative and quantitative data, and we were able to identify some strategies to address the priorities within the district. A draft plan was then presented to the district leadership team and the DEIC in May and June for input as required, and then the goals and objectives are presented here tonight for approval. Getting a little closer look at, I've got two slides on top of each other. Well, you have the board pa, I've never seen that one before, but it's haunting us from last one. Looking at goal one, if you can see it a little bit closer. Looking at excellent student outcomes, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that we're doing district-wide and then on some particular campuses to help bring about those excellent student outcomes. As you already heard about tonight, it's the continuing of capturing kids' hearts at our, both elementaries and our middle school. For the third year now, we also train all of our new teachers, no matter what campus they're at. So even if they're at ECC or high school, they do go through the two-day initial training. It is by far the most popular training that they go to. Again, this year, I heard cheers and tears because it can be such an emotional experience, but that is what they credit, making sure that they have a great start to the school year. So we are continuing that implementation. We are expanding our behavior supports through MTSS. Middle school's going to be piloting screeners for us and an intervention program and looking to expand that district-wide. Also, like I talked about with the state assessment report, we've brought in some specific math training, and at the elementary levels, the math academies, which will become a requirement with part of House Bill 2. But we are leaps and bounds ahead on that requirement already, and most of our elementary teachers have already attended the math academy, so we're supporting the implementation of those already, which again, you're starting to see the results of that in student performance. We're going to continue to implement our early college high schools. So this is our first cohort of freshmen. They took a trip last week and did a college visit, you may have seen in the board brief, so getting started on that. And then we're also looking at the realignment of assessments and enhanced progress monitoring. Again, that supports our efforts that we're about to begin with TIA as well. Looking at goal two, or superior workplace. Apologize for that. Really looking at campus-focused PD. I'm not sure. I know, this is the second, second time we've had it not exactly line up, but the goal two is campus-focused PD. So we really started that over the summer, where the district PD is aligned with whatever the campus need has been, rather than just district determined. So that's been a great partnership between the principals and the teaching and learning department, as well as throughout this week, really making sure we have some targeted training depending on the campus. PLCs focused on building that capacity and progress monitoring and the data dashboards, which I know I've already mentioned. We really worked on to the connection of the file or the forcible learning experience to what the classroom should look like. So we know as a district, we have a lot of teaching and learning expectations, and what we really wanted to do this summer and then this week is really focus that in for teachers and say, okay, but what does this really look like in my classroom? When am I supposed to do what? Because sometimes it can be very general and overwhelming, and we want to give them that specificity. So that's what we've been working on this summer, and then we'll continue throughout this week. We also have specialized teacher academies, so we have continued the reading academy and the first-year teacher academies, and this year we are adding sped teacher academies for the first time. Again, something we're really excited about because we've seen a specific need for that. And then, of course, implementation of the teacher incentive allotment. Goal three is exceptional customer service and community engagement. Working with the FISD Connect Implementation Plan, really making sure we're providing specific and deliberate opportunities to make those home and school connections, whether it be through parent training sessions, bilingual community, family engagement, offering a variety of surveys and a way for the community to provide input and partnership as well. And then, goal four, as you saw in June, also looking at strategic resource management, making sure that we're ensuring a balanced annual budget that prioritizes raises, preventative maintenance, and the refresh cycles, is really what we're focused on, which you approved in June. We're also going to continue to monitor our facilities for safety, security, and flexibility as we look at our growing population and needs. And security and threat assessment training, Mr. Schroller's been working with our campus administration and campus to increase those training efforts, and now all of that is also monitored through a digital dashboard. In September, our campuses will be here to present their goals and performance objectives for board approval, and then the DEIC will also meet next month to again, continue to review. I apologize for the, I've not, never seen that. I know, I know it doesn't look like that for y'all, but are there any questions for the district improvement plan? Administration recommends the board approve the 25-26 district improvement plan, goals and objectives as presented.
Ms. President, I would like to make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second. We have a motion by Dr. Odom. We have a second by Mr. Flir. Any further discussion or questions? All in those favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Oh, you're back up. You're on cue, I'm off cue. Next, we'll consider the approval of the district professional learning plan by Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Senate Bill 1267 does require board approval of the district professional learning plan as well. The DEIC has already approved this plan in May, and the entire plan is included in your board packet. So it does things like describe and specify district and campus professional development, possible topics that we're going to cover, and how they're, how they relate to our board goals and our strategic 2.0 plans, as well as the outline for how we handle our trade days in the summer. That's another benefit for our staff, where they are picking their professional development over the summer, and then they get those two days back in the school year. And so all of that is outlined in there, as well as all aspects of the ESPEC clearinghouse are required in the district's professional learning plan via edo hero or back-to-school training. Are there any questions on the professional learning plan? The administration recommends the board approve the professional learning plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation. We have a motion by myself, Stephen Schaubrock, a second by Ms. Martinez. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six to zero in favor of the recommendation. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Now we will consider an approval of the 2025-2026 T-Test Appraisers and Evaluation Timeline by Ms. Stonich.
Good evening again. T-Tests is the evaluation professional growth tool that we use as a district for teachers. So attached in your board book is a list of recommended T-Test appraisers and the appraisal timeline for the 25-26 school year. And according to Policy DNA Local, the board must approve alternate appraisers as well. So all those appraisers on the list, which includes all the principals and assistant principals from each campus, along with three alternate appraisers from central office, have been T-Test trained, and they've all turned in their certificates to me, so I know they've been trained. So they've all completed that training. And are there any questions in regards to the list of certified appraisers or the timeline?
I will say this, as we move forward into the TIA process, this T-Test process is going to be key, as our teachers will not only perform in the classroom and their students perform, but the teacher also has to be performed during the home T-Test, and so this is not something that's taken light.
Tomorrow, we have a big T-Test half-day training for teachers the next two days. If there are no other further questions, administration recommends the board approve the 2025-2026 T-Test Appraisers and Evaluation Timeline as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Ms. Martinez and a second by Mr. Moots. Any further questions or discussion on the topic? All in favor, please raise your hands in favor. Six to zero. Six to zero, recommendation carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll consider the approval of the 2025-2026 Student Code of Conduct by Mr. Schröder.
Good evening again. I'd like to point out and thank Ms. Donish for recognizing me for being quick up here. I usually don't get that too often, so.
She was smiling when she said that.
It's all sarcasm. Put my glasses on. Yes, sir. Each year, the Texas Education Code requires every school district, board of trustees, to adopt a student code of conduct, which outlines the district's procedures and responsibilities regarding student behavior and discipline. This document was developed by our legal counsel, Wash Gaios. Several updates have been made to this year's student code of conduct in response to new laws passed during the 89th Texas Legislative Session. One significant change strengthens a teacher's authority to remove a disruptive student from class. Under the new provisions, a teacher may refuse to allow the student to, may refuse to allow the student to return unless a placement review committee determines that returning the student is the best or only alternative. Another update removes the limit of the number of days a student may be assigned to in-school suspension. In regards to out-of-school suspension, the revised student code of conduct requires campus administrators to consider a parent's written request to convert an OSS, which stands for out-of-school suspension, to in-school suspension if the parent indicates they are unable to provide adequate supervision during school hours. However, administrators are not required to grant the request. They shall listen, but not required to grant the request. Changes have also been made to disciplinary consequences for e-cigarette offenses. Students who sell, give, or deliver an e-cigarette or vape to another person at school or school activity are still subject to DAP placement, even for the first offense. A student who uses or possesses an e-cigarette at school or school activity may be placed in DAP, except that if the student is not placed in DAP for a first-time offense, they must be placed in ISS for at least 10 school days. Kind of confusing change. We had to really think about it and so forth and really break that down. Finally, there have been some minor revisions to the statutory list of mandatory expulsion offenses, and each campus is now required to have a designated behavior coordinator. And what that is, is offenses on the student code of conduct, infractions by a student, that administrator is the person assigned to kind of, if there are questions about the discipline placements, the consequences given, that person is the person that kind of will report those things, talk to Dr. Gilstrap if there's a behavior threat assessment conducted on campus. He or she, the campus principal, can designate who that behavior campus coordinator are, but our campus coordinators are campus principals. Board trustees, are there any questions?
It sounds like there's some pretty significant consequences for those.
Yes, sir.
Break that code of conduct.
Absolutely.
And so students will be made aware of that.
Absolutely, just like the handbook, yes, sir.
And there is a difference between the handbook and the student code of conduct. Student code of conduct is adopted by the board. It is the meat and potatoes. The student handbook is how we implement things, smaller infractions.
And just, and I learned this a while back, the student code of conduct trumps the handbook.
Yeah, for what you described, some of those things seem fairly, fairly significant. So if someone wasn't aware of that, they could definitely put themselves in that situation.
Yes, sir.
So does that mean y'all, first of all, how many, what percentage of disciplinary actions would just they result in ISS now? This is probably, probably going to see an increase.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, with, yes, ma'am, absolutely. I don't know, I don't know how many, but yes, we will definitely see an increase with ISS placements.
I think we'll see fewer DAP placements with some of the changes, but I think we're going to see an increase in the ISS placements.
And is that across, I mean, elementary all the way through high school, or is...
As far as the increase in ISS placements, I would tend to say most likely, yes. There'll be an increase. Yes, ma'am.
Because some of what you described, you know, passing vape cigarettes in there, I'd imagine this is mostly middle school and high school.
Absolutely. Very, very seldom, but we've had a couple, not many. Correct, Ms. Brooks, Dr. Schröder? But not many.
Elementary.
Yes.
Well, that, but that's different. This is, this is also saying that ISS can be assigned more frequently for other reasons, not.
That is correct.
Not just the vaping and that.
Yes, and we'll look at that. We will definitely look at that, you know, ISS better than DAP and kind of, you know, persistent misbehavior by that kid. Well, ISS isn't working, what other options do we have and that type of stuff? And the parent has somewhat of a say in this as well. We try to work with the kid for the best academic need for that kid, and every kid is different. So it's not necessarily black and white, if that makes sense.
Are y'all changing, y'all's, our administrators changing the steps that they use when they're following that discipline procedure?
Yes.
Since we'll be able to put students into ISS longer than three days becomes a more of an option. We're also looking at doing, implementing lunch detention and some of those things as well, not just straight to ISS or suspensions.
So they've taken lunch detention for what?
No, 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 that's, we've always had that option, and we'll continue to use that. Like, middle school's bringing some after-school things, similar to chill and that type of stuff, which for character helps influence learning. So we have quite a few options besides just ISS, DAP. Good question, Ms. Martinez. If there are no further questions, administration recommends the board approve the 2025-2026 Forzal ISD Student Code of Conduct as presented.
I'll move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Flir and a second by Ms. Reed. Any further discussions or questions regarding the motion? All in favor, show of hands. Six to zero, recommendation passes. We will now consider the approval of calling the November 4th, 2025 General School Board Election, Mr. Schröder.
Yes, sir. State law requires that a school district hold a joint election with the city, county, or other local governmental agencies, entities. Therefore, the district has agreed to hold a joint election with the county. We've been.
We're on the.
We're on the joint election. No, I have it. Here it is. I've got it. I've got a lot of them. I'm just thinking. Yes, two trustee positions, District 2 Bana Reid and District 6 Craig Moots are up for election in November of 2025. In keeping with legal and policy requirements, the district will hold a trustee election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Board of trustees, are there any questions in regards to calling the November General School Board Election? If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the order calling the general election for November 4th, 2025 as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by myself, Stephen Shoprock, a second by Dr. Odom. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, show of hands. Six to zero, recommendation passes. Thank you all.
Now, if we call it, we can move on.
Now, we can move on.
Joint election.
Good catch.
With Wilson County, by Mr. Schröder.
Yes, sir. Okay, state law requires a school district to hold a joint election with the city, county, or other local government entity. Therefore, we have agreed as a district to hold a joint election with the county, which was approved by the Secretary of State. In order to meet the requirements for a joint election, the county and the district must have common polling places on election day. I believe I've shared those polling locations. The two common ones is the Wilson County Expo and Community Center and the Sacred Heart Parish Hall. Board members, are there any questions pertaining to calling joint election contract with Wilson If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the joint election agreement with the county of Wilson as presented.
I move to make the motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Moots, and a second by Mr. Flir. Any further discussions or questions about the motion? Those in favor, show of hands. Six to zero, motion passes. Thank you all. Now we'll consider the approval of the property casualty insurance. Again, by Mr. Schröder.
Yes, sir. As noted in an earlier board brief I sent out, the Forzal Independent School District recently solicited competitive proposals for property and casualty insurance coverage. Our three-year coverage terminates this August, the 31st of 2025. Proposals were due at the district administration office by noon on May 29th. Despite outreach to several agencies, we only received one proposal, and that was from Mr. Frank Pruski of Laverme Insurance Agency, whom is an independent agent representing Property and Casualty Alliance of Texas and Texas Political Subdivision. This limited response was not due to a lack of communication. I personally contacted several different agencies. Know that Forzal ISD has been a PCAT member for many years, and PCAT is the largest public school risk pool in the United States dedicated solely to property and casualty coverage. PCAT provides long-term cost stability, rate, and coverage consistency, and proactive loss prevention to more than 160 Texas school districts. Coverage includes property, which is wind, hail, flood, earth movement, et cetera, equipment breakdown, general liability, educators' legal liability, auto liability, auto physical damage, and cyber liability. PCAT has offered the district a three-year renewal proposal through the 2027-2028 school year at $812,407 annually, which is a significant decrease from $969,746,000 per year paid for the past three years. PCAT indicated that premiums dropped when talking to them at least 10% due to lower reinsurance rates and the district's improved lost, improved loss ratio. The deductibles and coverage limit in this year's proposal remain virtually the same as those accepted three years ago. This plan would go into effect September 2025 if approved by our board of trustees. Board, with that said, are there, are there any questions pertaining to insurance coverage?
That's great news.
Yeah, it really is.
Same coverage went down by 150,000.
Yes. Premiums deductible, virtually, virtually the same. So if there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the property and liability insurance coverage through the 2027-2028 school year as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation. I'll second that recommendation. So we have a motion by Mr. Moots and a second by Stephen Shoprock. Any further questions or discussions on the topic? Show of hands in favor. Six to zero, motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. That's good news.
It is.
Yes, sir. My interest has moved down.
Now we will consider approval of resolution of adopting Wilson County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Action Plan by Mr. Schröder. I'll call this to Mr. Schröder.
Yes, sir. Every five years, local jurisdictions such as cities, counties, school districts, and other special districts are required to update their hazard mitigation plan. The Wilson County Hazard Mitigation Plan update aims to reduce long-term risks to life and property from natural hazards. A FEMA-approved plan is required for eligibility in federal grant programs such as the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, flood mitigation assistance, and high-hazard potential dams. Participating jurisdictions identify projects that they may pursue if funding becomes available. There's no obligation to complete all projects, and unimplemented actions can carry over to the next update in 2030. FEMA does require a cost estimate for each project, though jurisdictions are not held to that estimate when applying for funding. Forzal ISD must adopt the 2025 plan by approving the resolution, a resolution which I believe is in the board packet, to remain eligible for FEMA mitigation funds. While funding isn't guaranteed, proposed district projects include HVAC upgrades, covered shelters for buses and playgrounds, improved bus AC systems, generators at key facilities throughout the district, weather-resistant rooftops, and zerescaping with native plants across campuses. These efforts aim to reduce the district's vulnerability and improve facility resilience over time. Board members, are there any questions?
Does this include like if you're at a classroom and you have material that needs to be, like your chemicals and like the chemistry lab, does this cover this or not?
It possibly could, but each jurisdiction such as Forzal ISD, we had to say, what are the things that we think can help us eliminate, reduce, mitigate property, life, that type of stuff to the Forzal ISD community? But that wasn't one. What I listed at the bottom is what I felt our district should try to go out for if there's funds available.
Because years ago, we had to list all the chemicals and stuff.
We still do that, but it's through, through a maintenance.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. If there are no further questions, administration recommends the board approve the resolution to adopt the Wilson County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan as presented.
I make the motion, Mr. President, to accept the administration's recommendation.
My second.
We have a motion by Dr. Odom and a second by Ms. Martinez. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Show of hands, those in favor. Six to zero, motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you, board of trustees.
Our last action item is to consider the approval of Policy Updates 125 and Local Policy Updates EFB Local, EFB Exhibit, FD Local, FM Local, and FNCE Local by Dr. Gilstrap.
Say all those real fast. Board members, the policy committee of the board met on Monday, July the 21st, to review these proposed updates and with no recommended changes. But I do want to take just a few minutes to go over a few of these. There were some minor updates in TASB update 125 to four different policies, but I do want to talk about one policy in particular, BDB Local. Establishes the requirement for board subcommittees. They must be adopted and approved by the board, and they have to have a stated purpose. And then, once they're finished and concluded with their, their agenda, then they have to be disbanded by board action as well. Any type of subcommittee cannot take action, they can only make recommendations to the full board. So some things were set in place in BDB Local, and those highlights are in the board packet. Other policies that we need to look at prior to the school year starting as required in legislation, again, going back to the 89th Legislative Session. The first one is EFB Local and an exhibit. We've already talked about the library materials and the development, it was in the student code of conduct, or excuse me, the student handbook, about the development of a school library advisory committee, otherwise known as a SLAC. The committee will be made up of a minimum of five parents selected from the boards. The committee will review and make recommendations to the board about the purchase of library books by the district and be a part of any book challenge process. The exhibit that is with this update is the resolution that will put that committee into place. It doesn't identify parents, we're going to talk about that at a future board meeting, but we'll actually select the parents and make a motion to approve the committee members. But the exhibit actually sets the committee into place. FD Local and FM Local both have regarding student participation. This removes the option for homeschool students to participate in UIL activities at school, which is required action by the board if the board so chooses to remove that option. And then finally, FNC Local. Again, Mr. Schröder talked about this in the student handbook process. This has to do with student telecommunications electronic devices. This prohibits the use of cell phones and other technology devices by students during the school day. It does further establish certain exceptions to the policy, which is required by law. Here in FISD, our practice is going to be, students are going to be able to keep their cell phones on them, in their backpack, in their purse, wherever it may be, their personal belongings, but it must be powered off, turned off, and put away and not used during the school day. As a district, students that violate this policy, they're going to be on a first offense. The phone will be collected, turned over to the office, and returned to them at the end of the day, it'll be documented. Second offense, parents can be contacted, then the parent must come up and pick up the phone. And then the third offense, and thereafter, parents would have to collect the phone from the front office, and the student would be subject to administrative disciplinary consequences. There is a big difference between not giving, you know, having a cellphone, that's one issue, but whenever, because we've already have been talking to teachers that are concerned about it, but what if the kid says no? about it, but what if the kid says no? Well, you're, now you're getting into a different disciplinary measure. You're getting into insubordination. You're not getting into a cell phone issue, you're getting into a directive from a staff member to, to cooperate. So there's, there's a few different things going on there. But that'll be our process that we're going to do here in Florzville. We do encourage our families to discuss this new policy and procedure with their students at home in preparation for the new school board, or school year. Ms. Martinez does have an email prepared that we're going to send out to families either this evening or early tomorrow with some more of this detailed information regarding the policy, but we wanted to give the board the opportunity to approve it first. So we'll have some more information. We will be pushing that out so that everyone will be aware of what, what our practice is going to be here in Florzville. Again, our middle school has done a great job last year of really holding the line in, in what we had in place. The only thing that really changes is this now includes the entire day, so passing periods and cafeterias, lunch, those kind of things. So, but we've been talking about, okay, is it when they get to school, it's going to be when the first period starts, the bell rings, till the end of the day, the bell rings, that's, that's what we're going to be focused on. Any questions on any of these policies? If not, the administration recommends the board approve the addition, revision, and deletion of local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Update 125 and Local Policy Updates EFB Local, EFB Exhibit, FD Local, FM Local, and FNC Local as presented.
I move to. I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second. We have a motion by Ms. Martinez and a second by Mr. Flir. Any further discussions or questions regarding the motion? Show of hands in favor.
Thank you, Board.
We have now concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 8:02.